All right, call this meeting and order for a stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll ball, please. Ister. Reigner. Here. Brochus. Here. Barnhart. Sure. Martina.
Here.
Uh, there was not any executive session held prior to tonight's meeting that was not necessary. Um, I have one addition to the agenda under new business, which is the selling of the police Tahoe to be placed on Minnesota bid for a reserve fund of sixty-five thousand. Do I have a second? Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, I do have a proclamation here for Family Court Awareness Month, uh, where the mission of Family Court Awareness Month, or F-C-A-M-C, is an increased awareness of the importance of family court system that prioritizes the children's safety and acts in the best interest of the children. The mission of this group is to be fueled by desire to create awareness and change in the family court, serving over fifty-eight thousand children across, uh, throughout the year in order to unsupervised contact of abusive parents, while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported, uh, while honoring those who have been reported murdered throughout their visitations and the danger to other parents. The mission of this organization is to increase awareness of the, and educate and training of domestic violence and children abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, sexual, and well childhood trauma. Uh, whereas this group is to increase awareness of the scientific studies of evidence-based treatment of the programs and service that is proven to be a safety and the effectiveness of awareness. So now there I, Josh Brochus, Mayor of the City of Sundari, therefore declare November as Family Court Awareness Month. Uh, DEI update, Andres, please.
I wanted to update on the sticker. I ordered the stickers. They should be two weeks. Also, I had Jeff give everybody a copy of the orders of DEI distribution.
Thank you, Andres.
Question. On the, on the language thing, remember you said glasses downstairs?
Uh, no, but I was just speaking to Melissa about it, and she said they're doing that, but they're going to see two days a week, so.
Alright, that's great. This is so good.
We'll get there five days afterward.
Alright, thank you. Uh, please update.
Yes, um, so just to give everybody updating on basically what was going on. Uh, first, just for the calls for the, uh, the month of October, five hundred and forty-seven calls police were dispatched to. Uh, so far in the month of November were two hundred and twenty-five calls. Um, I know everybody's in, uh, have been, have been calling about the investigation, uh, the former block Mark Street with the murder. Uh, with that, with that basically being said, that is under investigation. Uh, guys and girls are working tirelessly on that investigation, along with the three bomb threats that we've had. Uh, they're all kind of, everything's running together. So, um, they are actually getting ready to execute search warrants when the bomb threat started. Uh, we are working, uh, around the clock actually with that. Uh, different agencies are working with us. Uh, state police are on board with us. We're also have a lot of other outside agencies as well. Uh, hoping to come to an outcome with that. Uh, we're going, we're, we're digging deep. Um, and they're working very, very hard. Um, just had a conversation with a lot of the officers at the station. Um, it's, it's been a, it's been a rough two weeks. Um, but guys and girls basically, they're handling it. They're doing what they need to do. Um, everybody's working as a team. Um, but I just, you know, the team itself is tired. But I will say this, the team, you, you, you guys have some of the best police officers in, in Sundari working for you right now. Um, and that's, and that's coming from me and, and also from Corporate Slack. Um, I've just, I've just seen some remarkable things this, this, this past two weeks. So, um, with that said, everything, those two investigations are still under, ongoing. Um, again, we're working, working on them and bring them to a, to some type of a closure. So, um, other than that, any questions to council?
Alright, thank you. Shane Tree update?
Good evening, everyone. Um, we just wanted to let you know that we've finally got the pricing for the t-shirts that we have been discussing. And there's two different formats as to how the process would be to make the t-shirts. Wednesday, we have our meeting and we're going to be discussing and deciding on which way we want to go. And then we're going to be putting out, um, sheets for the actual ordering of these items. Um, the other thing I wanted to let you know is that we had been kind of kicking around of having a junior shade tree personnel, you know, to get kids involved and that type of thing. And we'll be discussing that as well. Questions?
When, when will the shirts be ready to order? Are they, are they ready now?
No. What we're going to do is we're going to put out a sheet where people can order.
Okay.
And then we're going to place the order.
Okay.
Because you don't want to like have a bunch of these and then.
Yeah. Could you send one of those forms to Jeff? That way we can post it on our social media sites and go from there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What's the age for a junior shade tree? Do we have that?
Um, we're going to just, uh, we're looking like in high school, back senior thing.
I thought you were going to say first, but.
Yeah, so, um, we do have some that are interested in this kind of thing. So that's kind of what brought it forward.
Alright, always for the interest.
Yeah, exactly. Any questions? Uh, just one question. Were we able to get those trees done?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, uh, public comment on agenda items. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time?
Sorry.
Please state your name.
Julie Brochus. Um, when these are discussed, you all might know what the discussion is, but you guys like cut to the chase and we're like, what the heck's going on?
Okay.
So a little background would be helpful.
Okay, that works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this time, at this time, please state your name?
Deb Bets. Travis, I was just wondering, are you, um, also watching out for the schools with all this bomb threat thing on with the, with the burger thing, please?
Yes, uh, just so you're aware, I was losing contact early this morning with Chief Williams. Um, we, we had a plan in place for today as well. Um, uh, he spoke with administration. Actually, Chief Williams helped me, uh, on a, a home check that we ended up having to do. But, um, the area businesses, schools, schools was one of my main concerns at this point as, as well as, as the other downtown stuff. It was the first time we ever had an alert that went out by phone that was provided by EMA. Um, so it was, it was, it was a scary type of thing that, that when that phone message went out, but it was something that I thought we needed to do was shelter in place. And it was at that point, just a decision that I made, um, to make that, to make, so we didn't have so much traffic and movement in downtown area.
Well, I want to personally thank all of our police because, you know, everybody talks about the military, but sometimes Sundari is a battleground, you know what I mean? And you don't know if you're going to come home at night. So I want to thank you for your service and thank all the police officers for their service.
Appreciate it. They, 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 those officers have been working tirelessly.
Absolutely, yes.
And I will not say that not one of them have, they all deserve a lot of credit.
Awesome.
Hey Travis, one thing I'd just like to bring up too, is I think counsel to a man is glad to see using Chief Williams as a resource.
Yes.
I think that's long overdue. I'm glad, I know I am, and I think the rest of the councils would like to see that.
Any other public comment at this time? Alright, moving on. Approval of minutes and reports, uh, minutes from October eighth and the twenty-third for reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, park secretary, and planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Uh, moving on, old business, uh, electric, Councilman Ister.
Yes, that's electric for city hall and, uh, the whole city itself. Jeff, you have already changed eight years over.
Yes.
And we have the rest who have changed over for the first few years. Are any questions regarding that? That was what, seven point?
We were paying eleven point seven cents per kilowatt hour. We dropped some down to seven point seven. The rest we dropped down to that January first.
That's fantastic. Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Were you just, were you, were you just giving us an update or?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know. Okay, that's fine.
Well, we had discussed it before.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were voting on it or, uh, if we needed to vote on it or not, but.
Did we vote on it before? Before we were historic.
I thought we voted.
We voted in the way that we're sort of.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
How long that?
Two-year contract, twenty-four months.
Two-year contract.
Yeah, well, I did, I thought we voted authorize it for short, help this out. Well, okay. At this time, I'll make a motion that Jeff, not the authorization, after he's also a solicitor, and, uh, sign this up for the, uh, twenty-year contract.
Hudson.
Second.
Can I show you?
Yes, the only thing that's, that's not fixed is we can negotiate down. If the trend, if, if there's a change in office and, and things go down, we negotiate down. We'll negotiate every, you know, order payment. Because I mean, we, we have like one point two million kilowatt hour per year. It's a lot of money. Order payment's a lot of money. So we can negotiate down. If it goes up to thirty cents, we stay at seven point seven. They'll never walk for the two-year term. Uh, Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Keep going, Councilman Ister.
Biometrics, of course, we discussed that. That is a figured printing, uh, piece of equipment we can take and buy through Amazon.
Correct.
And it will be tracking when employees come and get questions about that. Will you, Jeff, just talk about some of those stuff?
We talked about pay loss. I said the numbers I had for pay loss were, no, this is for the hardware, not the phone. I didn't get any information on their phone system. But with the biometrics, you come in, you stick your thumb on when you're at work. When you leave, your thumb scan out. It's going to encourage people to come to work on time and stay at work on time. It can be updated by, by phones. There's no, we pay one fee. It's for four, for four boxes. We're going to, we're talking about cutting it down to three boxes. For, for three of the city buildings. Be about three hundred and fifty bucks. And if we don't like the system, we send it back to Amazon. I mean, it's, it's, it's accountability and we pay for what we get.
Is it a one-time?
It's a one-time fee. There's no update fee. There's no, there's no software. We don't pay any updates. It's a one-time thing. I mean, if the machine breaks, I'm sure we get a, an upgrade from, or a new one from Amazon. But if, if you guys don't like it, if you don't like it, it doesn't work, send it back.
And is the program a widget? This should.
Your cell phone, yours, you'll have, like, you and the girls will have one, I'll have one. And when people, like, say somebody working outside the office, they'll call and say, hey Jeff, I'm working here today. We can update it by phone. Not everybody, not everybody will have it, have the, uh, authority or, or the capability to do it. But it's going to, it's going to make people be at work when they're supposed to be at work.
Well, so, I mean, I, I mean, you're saying they're being called, so it's the same, they're at home, they call us at work?
Well, as they do, you're going to make that change or I'm going to make that change.
And I feel like that they should be in the building.
Like, I mean, those are under circumstances, like.
There's circumstances, but it shouldn't happen all the time.
Right, right, right.
But the capability is there and it has to be there.
True, we're going to punch out, I mean, we, we, we write it on our carbs. Are y'all on carbs now? It's going to take yellow cards. It's not going to take any jobs. It's just going to streamline how we do payroll.
Because we're going to use it for payroll. We have to punch out for lunch.
Right, they're going to punch out for lunch half hour and punch back in. So I'm going to say we do it, we do it by pen now. They'll do it by actual. We'll have, it'll, it'll be a running report on our phones. The program is on our phone. It's an app. It's not a, it's not a software.
Just so I'm understanding this, in a massive council, if we have a situation where somebody is on a forty-hour week and their, and their biometric shows they work for the seven, then we can make it to the ten? Next question is, we don't have no phones. Will it work on your computer?
It'll work on your computer? The app will load on your computer? A little bit will work on your, your, your city phone or your phone?
Our office has no city phones.
Okay. Your computer, you'll do right there, Kevin, right here.
Wait, I mean, we're going to use this as a base status rather than be writing for the. If they're not, if they're not. We can bring up the hour and that if it's just going to show what you guys working, how many hours, if it's working. Or we can use this as, as those who have rights.
So if we don't, if we don't like it, if it doesn't work, if it's something that's bad?
If we have to do this, we'll print out all the data.
We all have it. You all have it now. You guys, in your pockets, guys, everything on the system's in your pockets. Read them. It'll show you exactly what's in your files.
So we don't have to make a decision now, you know, for.
Well, you don't show them. Then it's going to, everything's going to happen here and it's going to, because it doesn't matter. It's going to straighten your work. Because right now, I believe the payroll.
I, the pain's there in your car. You pay to look at her, with her computer, her phone. It says Jeff only worked thirty-seven hours. Jeff gets thirty-seven hours.
So it's over thirty-seven and a half, thirty-eight.
That's it, right.
Okay, so then it's one of them going to happen. The first set of, hopefully it'll be part of an app or something that the payroll is monitored that way.
I mean, it's, it's one of those things you're going, you know it is. City's finally moving into the twenty-first century, how people want to sign inside work. It's like, it's like a spreadsheet. People saying, Josh Brochus, hours worked, thirty-seven. Jeff, forty. It's like very simple. I should, like I said.
We also have to have a policy set up quickly. Make sure it's called G and using it.
We already have that. We should have, we should already have that. We should have that inside of our handbooks.
Well, we can, with this, we can look at a new, we'll swap a new policy, see what our handbook says and. I've already made a. Yeah. Alright.
Mayor.
I, I would love the police department to actually have something, like be a trial run for that. I mean, you'd like.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't think about you guys because you're on the street so much.
Right, but I think that would be a great, I think that would be a great thing because it basically show your times in, times out, but at the same time, you know, you got to, you also got to remember, you know, I wouldn't even just do a, oh, I do all, I do a whole fuck here. There's actually scans out.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll say to you something that, that's basically there, but also taking account of that is that if somebody's working over and they basically don't, you know, it looks to say that an officer has a late call. You're looking at twenty-two minutes, that's going to be twenty-two minutes where before they didn't have.
Right, maybe if your finger's dirty and it don't, you know, biometric scan, just call and say, hey Jeff, I punched it in, I punched it in zero seven and I, I left it, you know, fifteen hundred. That's, you'll get paid. I mean, if you can get this updated and.
I would, I would, that's a great idea.
I'd like to set it up for every department. And use it as a tool for. Get tested.
Yep.
Can I talk to you, Travis?
I'm sorry.
These devices. So have you given thought to the company that you're buying it from? Can they take any of the detail from anyone and use it? Because the reason I'm asking is that there was a company that was selling a device that was regarding your health. And they were taking all these, um, metrics and selling it to a company. And then they were utilizing people's metrics.
Julie, I'm not a super computer guy, but this isn't going to be software that you're going to monitor from Philadelphia. It's going to be an app that we monitor here in the city.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is the company that you're buying it from.
Going to have any access to it?
Yes.
It shouldn't. If we have, if it's our app, it shouldn't.
I get it.
I can't tell you, Joel, I'm not a computer guy, but I don't think so. It's not, it's not going to be monitored from outside this building.
Okay, just, just give that.
Okay, thank you, thanks. Oh, story walk.
Uh, last meeting, we talked about how Dakenstein and Listel want to do the two-story walks, uh, down the riverfront up by Fort Discovery. Um, Musta couldn't make it, but now she's here now. Does anybody have any questions about the story walks? Alright, so I make the motion to move forward with the story walks. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Martina.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Barnhart.
Yes.
Mike Rhodes has been a, a co-enforcement officer for sixteen years. He's been really qualified. I'm very proud of the way he's been handling things. So I make the motion to promote or hire him, and or hiring him uh, for public safety supervisor effective, uh, January first, twenty-four, at a salary of fifty, fifty thousand dollars a year.
Which is in the budget, correct?
Which is in my budget, yes.
I second. Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on, uh, twenty-twenty-four budget. Uh, we had a budget meeting prior to this. Uh, we do have a balanced budget with, uh, no tax increase. So I make the motion to accept the first reading of the twenty-twenty-four budget. Do I have any second? Oh.
What's up? The budget's, uh, we have a budget, balanced budget, as in not with the rates, the changes you need to get listed.
I have four million.
But the budget itself, because that. I'll get through first. Four ninety-seven, um, seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars even, for your twenty-twenty-four. And that includes another officer in there and some other members too. But the two percent of the officer employed since.
Second.
I agree.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
National tax increase, guys.
Francis, we didn't hear that's no.
I heard.
Oh, you love.
I believe in what you passed the last.
Uh, Councilman Barnhart, you are up.
I make the motion to approve, uh, fifty South North Street for the heart, a historical architectural review board.
Second. Martina. Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I make the motion to approve sixty-two North Front Street for the heart. I think that moves on to a free.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Alright, uh, moving on to twenty-twenty-four city organizational meeting dates. Uh, in your package, you will see all the meetings for the different boards that meet, council, RA, BLA, planning, but like budget meetings, ARV, zoning, shade, police pension. So what we're trying to do is try to get all these boards, I mean, all these meetings, uh, published at one shot. Try to save taxpayer dollars rather than doing, you know, each one at a separate time. So, and all these dates were confirmed, confirmed by the sitting members of the, each of the boards. Yep, they'll be posted on the website, all those places. Any questions, anyone? Yes. Yes, uh, who was the replace? It was Trey.
Trey first.
Yeah, Trey first was the replace. Yeah, he, he was at the last meeting that you were there. So I make the motion for these meeting dates for twenty-twenty-four. Do I have any second? Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Reigner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Reigner, you are up, sir.
Okay, uh, the application for tax deductions, uh, there are six different applications. One was a non-residence, one was SSI disability, and four would be ceased. It's totally two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. I make the motion that we, we honorize those tax.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reigner.
Okay.
First. Yes. Sorry. Go ahead, keep going, Councilman Reigner.
Okay, um, this is, this is just a report that as of this year, our MMO, which is our responsibility, our pension, the city's responsibility, uh, is for the police department is zero and for the non-uniform police is one hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars. That dropped ten thousand from last year. Uh, and now I, we have outstanding bills of eighty thousand, seventy-three dollars and eighty-seven cents from the general fund, three thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents from private, from liquid fuels, uh, fifty-five thousand, three twenty-eight, seventeen, from private grants, payroll of sixty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. That is for ten thirteen, sixty-five thousand, seven ninety-nine, ninety-six for ten twenty-seven, and eighty-five thousand, two sixty-five, ninety-nine, form eleven-nine. I make the motion to pay those bills.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, discussion, discussion items, Councilman Martina, recreational grants.
Um, do you want me to just combine that in the bike pedestrian audit?
Yeah.
The kind of thing, anything we're on. Um, so the bike pedestrian audit drafts, um, I believe all of you were sent that. That is a, uh, review of our bike and pedestrian routes within the city. We're establishing them. Um, that was a grant that was established before I could not hear, so I think that was in twenty-twenty, I believe, that we approved. Um, so, uh, this is just discussion right now, so I, I need everybody to review that. And next meeting, we will approve that draft proposal. Um, because I need the final to go to DCNR for them. Um, so if you can, please review that for next evening. If you have any questions, please let me know. Um, and for the recreational grants, um, I know there were some questions about us going for recreational grants for that entails. Um, so I had a meeting with the regional director, regional, um, regional individual from DCNR West. Um, and we have gone for a couple of recreational grants the TA set aside to do the, continue the Riverwalk. Um, and obviously we have this bike pedestrian audit, we have sweep. So we have a couple of things out there that actually do tie, tie into this bike pedestrian audit. But if we want to do an all encompassing more, um, more grants more established, um, West said that they want a study done in order to go for, I will call it big money, DCNR. Um, until that time, uh, they won't fund any bigger projects. They won't look at moving if we want to do anything off at the complex. They don't want to see anything, get rid of a baseball field and put something else there. They need a study done, feasibility study before any of that type of stuff, big work is done. Otherwise, they won't fund it. There are grants to, that they, um, do provide for that. There are fifty-fifty match, so you are, would be required to, um, provide fifty percent. But I just want to let everybody know, um, that we have spoken to them. Um, and, uh, that is something that they would require us to do before we're going to do any of that type of big potential work in any of the areas within the city, not just of that.
What's the normal cost of the fifty-fifty matching grant?
I believe it, he said between fifty and eighty thousand, it could go up there depending on how much and how extensive you want to do it. So you're looking at between twenty-five and will cost fifty thousand dollars in that.
So with that being said, so they need to have the entire scope done? They're going to get money, not, not just of the complex, but including the bike pedestrian path and all that stuff included in that? Or just the complex or?
So if we, like, if we were, I'm not saying they, they offer this, but I'm just, from the, I'm just saying we, we wanted to do a, um, I don't know, we wanted to do sidewalks and, and, and do, replace equipment at a, a, um, playground. They probably would be okay with that, but if we're talking anything major, we're talking, we don't want to record where the playground is. We want to actually take that down, move it to a different location, change what is already there existing. They want to see that the, um, citizens are for that. They want to see that and what type of changes and what is the usage of these things and what would be the usage?
So with that also being said, so are they looking for like, out of the feasibility, are they looking like, alright, how much stuff you can put in this one area? Or just saying, what's the public feedback? Or like, what are they looking for in this feasibility study? Because years ago, Jimmy may, he may have been involved, he may not have, over at the old city dump, one of the soccer coaches, one of the soccer fields over there, and he went to, I believe it was Penn State, and they used their engineering program as one of their, we'll say projects, I don't know the right word. One of their projects, alright, this is your project, you do the feasibility study on it. And it was more like, it was free, but it still counted as a feasibility study that was for the grant proposal. Could we do something like that to go to one of these colleges to do that or not?
I need the exact wording that he gave, specifically in the email, but, you know. Um, I did ask specifically about Penn State because we did talk about that a couple of months ago, I believe it was. I did ask him that. And yes, that can be helpful in doing feasibility study, but they won't do every, that, I was told that they won't do everything that they would like to see done by a professional consultant that does feasibility studies.
Did they give us, did they give us list of professional consultants that we can get in contact with?
No, they, they tend not. It, it would be, um, same way we did our comprehensive. They, they gave us a list of people to send. If we ever wanted to do an RP or contact anybody, it could be the same process where they can just give us a list and we can choose from that or contact them, see them, an idea of what it costs and, you know, if we ever want to go down that route.
Well, I mean, in my own personal opinion, I think that's a good route to go down. If you ever want to rebuild, not rebuild, continue to build our recreation, we are going to get this feasibility study done. Well, I mean, in my own personal opinion, I think that's a good route to go down, if you ever want to rebuild, not rebuild, continue to build our recreation, we got to get this feasibility study done, so I mean, does anyone, does everyone agree that we should get some names of consultants and see what their fees are, so we can kind of get the ball rolling in the right direction here to see what costs are, so we can plan down the road?
Our engineer being talented in the twenties.
So can, so is we, one of the people that, who can do it?
Well, we don't know, but at least he would have an idea of what it's going for out on the market.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so, so next councilman, you can come back with some type of idea, whether it's Lee's idea, or just their idea, a series of people we can reach out to, that way we can get the ball rolling, that this doesn't just stop at a conversation.
And one last thing, um, there is a grant that we talked about with the TA set aside, because the TA set aside does not cover, um, engineering, uh, for the riverfront walkway to continue. DCNR, again, I did talk to Wes about this, DCNR would do the engineering or, or put the money up for the engineering, but in order to do that, there are certain stipulations they have to meet for their, for their applications. One of them is obviously public info, so we do need to schedule a public meeting, um, by the, early next year, I'll call it, January, um, in order to, uh, get the points for that part of the application. They'd like to see that done before, obviously, the applications.
When, when's the grant or the application open up?
April, if I remember correctly.
Because if, I mean, we get, for example, I'm not saying next week, but like, prior to, one of the council meetings, the end of the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, before, before council meeting, yeah, that's, that's fine, it just needs to be public, on record, that we did this, in advertising, that's what it needs to be.
Is anyone opposed to doing this next meeting and get it, to get the ball rolling? Is there, is there anyone okay with that? Before the next council meeting? Oh, yeah, you wanted something, yeah, so we'll do it, no, you wanted something, so you wanted the meeting, so we can just do it the la, the?
We can do it in December.
In December.
Yes.
Alright.
So I'll plan that for December?
Yeah, that meet, when?
The record.
You know that one, it's only meeting you have in December.
Yeah. Alright, sir.
Any other questions on that, anyone? Alright, thank you, Derek. Uh, for those who don't know, oh, I'll move on, so the new city website, for those who don't know or haven't seen, our new web, city website has been created. It is a lot more modern and a lot more welcoming to, we'll say, visitors or anyone, it's not more, it's not so much government based, it's more of welcoming, showing what we have to offer, all the different recreation services, whatever it may be, so if you have a chance, go check it out, it's still under the same domain of, uh, summarypa.org, so go check it out. And the one thing I'm having Jeff and Robin do to try to get more engagement in our businesses, I mean, they're going around to every single business that we have registered in the city, and trying to get their business name, their address, their phone number, and just their contact information that we can put on the city website to help promote them. That's just another way of advertising for them, so if you know any businesses who did not get one yet, I said we're still continuing that process, I know Jeff and them, they're out today, they're going to continue doing that, so it's a little slip, it's very simple, take probably a minute to fill out, so if you know any businesses, tell them to stop by City Hall, or look forward to one of these contact forms, so we can get them on our new city website to help promote those businesses. Any questions, anyone, for the city website, the new city website? We already voted on that, that was like, never been getting to add it to, um, Minnesota. So that was more of an update, so, you're welcome. Uh, moving on to Haven Ministries, B, so as you don't know, Haven Ministries, I believe they broke ground, Corey, last week, two weeks ago?
Kinda, yeah.
Kinda like that, so, like I said, that project has started, uh, Corey had some, we'll say, questions that he wants to ask council to see if we could help out with that project down there, so Corey, the four is yours.
Thank you. So, obviously, we're here with Haven Ministries, and as all of you know, um, we did that kind of groundbreaking ceremony, because the person who started that project, uh, moved out of town, Florida, came back last week, we wanted a picture of nobody, and that's sort of a whole thing, a long time ago. And now it's going to happen, did we actually, anything going on down there yet? No, not quite, I'm looking at the contractor. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is number one, uh, the big deal is that, you know, we have to get all the permission to code in our office. And correct me where I may go wrong here, I'm not quite sure in all facts, but, um, so we had a bill from Code, um, twenty thousand dollars roughly for the project, about a million dollars. My understanding is that the city, um, whatever you want to call it, I'll use the word kickback, since it's a kickback from this, as I think it's goes out to a third party to be done, correct? So, um, so first thing I want to do, is we, obviously, we'll do their obligation, since this is Code, if you don't know, I'm going to give them the check for almost twenty thousand dollars, and they're back.
That goes me.
It's Code, no, it's its Code.
I end up.
You're going to get it. But anyhow, the reason I'm here is, and I'm going to put you in a little predicament, but that's what you, you're the people who's more important. So if you, if you get thirty percent of that, which I understand, six thousand dollars. So I'm not here to take your money, because I know the city always needs money, everybody needs money. But what I'm asking you to do, Council, is if you would forfeit your money. Money that's not already in the pocket, so I'm not missing anything. As you know, Haven's pretty vital to the area, I spend the afternoon there, typical, it's cold weather, you know, the phone rings off the hook. Everybody needs a place to stay, we don't have it, but we're gonna have it, that's why we're doing what we're doing. You know, we raised over a million dollars, we need one point four million, we have the million to build the building, we need another about four hundred thousand to revamp what's there. And that's where we're at, you'll see a big push out in the spring, staying away from the holidays. So, on the table here, six thousand dollars roughly that you're going to get, and you would be kind enough to discuss it next week. Again, this might be different, some other things, this isn't taxpayer money, we have no money from anywhere, it's just what people reach in their pocket and get. If, if you think about this over the next two weeks, and it's, ah, you know, we need money here, I get, I get it, I get it. There's no, no hard feelings at all, but if you think in your vote maybe no, hopefully not, but if you are, would you then reconsider, say, would you give half of it? So anyhow, just think about it, whatever you can, for us, it's just more donations, we don't have to go out and beg and put arms forward and all that, so anyhow, thank you.
Thank you.
Corey, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Down there.
I'm believing you're very welcome. If, everybody's busy, but when you get, I'm involved, so if I'm down there, man, you walk away from there sometimes, and you almost have tears in your eyes. And, uh, so we're going to crack some of it, we'll never crack it all, but we're going to have.
How many rooms are you having?
Not, it's ten room building, two stories, but nine are going to be living, one's a big laundry facility, and we have eight existing. So, now we have to put bunk beds in most of those rooms, get more people in, it's jammed up down there. The good news down there, there's good news, is those people eat well. If you're ever hungry, we get so many good donations, the national beef across the river, things like that, people eat very well, so you don't have to worry about that, but it's got to be able to.
I can't think of the lady's last name, but I think her first name was Kathy, I never.
Kathy, yes, Kathy, she started that whole thing.
She was involved when we were on board.
Yep. Carol Beeler, that was there for a while, now it's Christie Ziegler's. So, and then the other thing that happened, I don't know if anybody noticed or even was in the paper, so we had two assistants, and just a week ago, get this story, a week ago, um, the, the one assistant, um, became friends with somebody that had been there like a year ago. These people moved, lived to, uh, moved to Northern Maryland. We had gotten some furniture and things donated, we really could use. But this person that was the acquaintance from a year ago needed it, because they kind of got themselves a new apartment. So again, this part timer that we had, decided one night she would drive some things down to Maryland, took one of the residents there, just, I guess, company. On the way back from Maryland, this is like, ten o'clock at night, she doesn't feel good, and she's driving, she goes, I don't feel good, I, I got pulled over. Gets out of her car and drops dead in Florida. So, put a big, kind of punched air Haven for a while, so, of course, a lot of volunteers came in and did a couple of things, but we're, we're, now we already did, uh, interview a person, a great person, um, who's in the stars right after Thanksgiving, but this, in one of those things that happened, but wow, what a, what a bad thing.
Thank Haven, the, the Code Department, there's situations that arise where people are put out of their house for the night or whatever. Code's been very, or, uh, Haven's been very, very cooperative with Code to help.
We try, I know that sometimes in emergencies, they'll have somebody sitting on a couch, but at least they're in, they gotta do work with it. Alright, so consider that next week, or two weeks, and then take care of it.
Thank you, Corey, and thank your team for their efforts as well.
Yep, thank you.
So like I said, I'll just go over it right, I mean, I don't know if we want to discuss now or think about it, but I'll just say this, I, I mean, I'm in support of leaving those fees, I know we need to vote on it, but, because that's how I feel, because of the impact they have on the community and what they do for our community, so I don't know if anybody else wants to discuss anything, but like I said, that's my stance on it, so.
I guess that they help Code a lot, so.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure it's always a challenge, right?
Yep. So any questions on anyone? Alright, uh, moving forward here, uh, solar energy, I know, we'll say, a couple of weeks ago, I brought, brought up about using the old city dumps, and we're not doing anything with it, it would be a solar field to help offset the cost of our, of our, our electricity usage, so we had one company reach out to us, and they wanted to see the site, see what they could do for us. So with Jeff and the help of Mike, he took, they took the individual over there, he did his, we'll say, survey on the proper terms is, he gave us some numbers back, he needs more information from us, but just from the numbers that we have as of right now, he believes in his opinion that in five to seven years, we could be, uh, energy efficient, from what he could put over there, and depending, obviously, with the cost of a bridge, possibly up to ten years, including that cost of a bridge as well. So like I said, we're looking into that yet, like I said, he's going to come back with more accurate numbers on, after we get him what our kilowatt usages for the entire year, in more detail, so I just want to give council an update on that as well, so.
Josh, talk about that, over on Blue, that everybody talk about, water, the solar field there.
Yeah.
Is everybody going to use that? That's pretty aggressive.
Didn't make trouble with that?
Has anybody contacted them to see what, how it's working out?
I know we reached out to different municipalities and SHU, see how they did, because it's kind of a different, it's going to sound like a kind of different ballgame dealing with a private entity compared to dealing with municipalities and school districts and colleges, so.
They're pretty big, I mean, that, that's a pretty big, solar.
They're actually selling back to their, they're actually selling back to their, the citizens in Seale's goal, they're selling.
SHU is.
Yeah, they're selling back to the citizens, kind of what PPNL sells, I said, if we, if we did this job, and became energy efficient seven years, five years, seven years, I mean, we, just to be a moneymaker, for the upfront cost, you get a lot of it back from the federal and state government, it isn't a house, so.
One of the things that's unique about ours, is the mountain right there, so we got to find out what's going to take, to get enough energy, what we'll do before, to, to supply this. Well, it can be done, but that amount of, where they're putting this stuff.
Yeah, and I know a lot of, since the technology has increased so much, a lot of, you don't need direct sunlight anymore, and a lot of it is, as the sun moves, the panels move also with it, so you get more direct sunlight, and this, this is like thinking more long-term wise, I know, this is the way of the future, some people think like, you know, with being energy efficient, that could also be a way for us to be less fuel deficient with gas, starting to go EV vehicles if we end in the future. I mean, not a hundred percent, but you know, if you cut half of them down, you know, just everyday driving, with some EV vehicles versus EV and, uh, gas, I mean, look at our budget just in fuel alone, pushing seventy-five to a hundred thousand, if we could save those additional funds by going that route. You know, this is those things, we got to look long-term, to offset costs, so, just want to leave all, give that all those updates, any questions, anyone?
Uh, gosh, we can talk about, there might be another option, and it may be more cost efficient to actually get over there potentially.
Yeah, like I said, that was just, that was just one quick way, because he, we didn't.
No, I get it, it's a good, direct route, I get it, but it's expensive, so, we'll, we'll talk, and it might be another option potentially, but.
Yeah. Sounds like a plan. Alright, uh, moving on, uh, the city emergency plan, uh, with the recent, we'll call incidences that happened within the last month here. I know we met a year ago with Paul Brown and the other, uh, different individual agencies that had to be involved in that. Uh, Councilman Barnhart did get a to-do list from Mr. Brown finally, to things we need to look into to get this, uh, ball rolling here. Um, so, there's different individuals he'd like to meet with, so we're going to get, uh, moving on, meeting with those individuals to get this plan in place, so that when these incidents do arise, that everyone is ready to go. Is there any questions on the, on that, as of this moment?
If I got, anybody wants to read what we got so far, I got it right here.
Yeah. So, as I said, we'll keep people updated as we get closer towards a more, more of a finished product, we'll let the, let the public know as well, but I said, that's not forgotten about, still in the works, like I said, these things take time, they don't happen overnight, because there's many different moving parts, and many different agencies that have to come together to figure it all out. So, just want to let the, everyone know that. Councilman Ister, I mean, taught an update, I mean, we kind of discussed it previously, so that's already taken care of. We've taken care of the bike pedestrian audit with the previous, and now, Councilman Barnhart, you are up, sir.
Um, I could talk to Parks and Rec about having heritage days. Uh, they'd like more information to move forward, so, this Thursday, this Thursday is the sixteenth, at six o'clock. Anybody interested in, uh, being on the heritage days committee, we can discuss what we want to do, or how we want to handle it, and we can take it to Parks and Rec at the beginning of next year, and let them know what's going on, see if they're interested in going.
Where's the meeting at?
Meeting is on the first floor, in the conference room. Six o'clock. You don't have to be there, Jerry.
Maybe he wants to be in there.
Is that, uh, for the spaghetti dinner or the sixteen?
The spaghetti dinner is one to three, I think.
Yes.
I thought it was still six thirty.
Alright, is that it, Councilman Barnhart?
That's it.
Alright, uh, there are some announcements, uh, the Santa and Tree lighting ceremony, while will take place on November twenty-four, the parade at six, the lighting at six thirty. Uh, we, the city budget, we no longer need that since we have a balanced budget, so we do not need another budget meeting on the twenty-seventh. Uh, the next city, uh, fire department consolidation meeting will be the twenty-seventh at five PM.
Where's that at? Here.
Here.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, the next city council meeting, then we'll follow the twenty-seventh at six fifteen. New Year's Eve celebration, uh, starting from one to four, will be the free skate up at the ice skating rink, will be different items given away for free. And then downtown, starting at eight PM, so midnight, et cetera, will be the lighting of the light bulb, and just let everyone know, these are both, uh, family friendly events, for both. Now, at this time, is there any public comment at this time, any public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Joe Bartolo. I had a question with, uh, with the incident that went on in downtown there, did we know if any of the suspects were renters? If they, if they were actually on the list of supposed to be living there?
The owners decided, the owners decided, because they weren't, they weren't living in the house, and they reported.
Sure, I understand.
We can't give specific information, you know that, but. Yeah, generally speaking, we can't give that information, because it's, uh, personal information concerning those people. That being said, I think it's safe to say that if they were renters, it's being looked into right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, ma'am.
Never bet. So, I was talking to Derek, I'm pissed about it with you, don't you know, when I was talking about different grants and stuff, and I worked on it, and stuff, and you had asked about the sidewalk grant.
Yes.
My husband said we call Seale insured, and I was talking about the ILEQ, the, the grant for the sidewalks for ILEQ, and it was based on the people in the community, whether they rented or owned their home, it, it was based on their income. So, and then they did the whole entire ILEQ for that.
Thank you.
Who's, oh, Corey, well, well, I would suggest, I was thinking that if we're going to give six thousand dollars to, uh, Haven Ministries, then maybe it would be fun if we even recoup some of that money that we're getting, that we're doing for taxes, um, by having people buy a brick for five hundred dollars, and use it in maybe some kind of landscape, and like, you know, like a patio or something with people's names on it.
You mean, you mean down there, Haven?
Yeah, like, to recoup the six thousand that we would give them to, for a tax extension, right? Or for.
So you're saying, we, we should do the front, and I'm not.
I just think it would be great, a great idea to, for the city to be a part of it more than just handing over six thousand dollars, I think it would be fun for everybody to, like, donate money for a brick, and then have that put into the patio or something.
I mean, I would get with Corey and ask to organize it and see what happens.
I think that would be fun. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time, any other public comment? Please state your name, ma'am. Please state your name, ma'am.
I know that you didn't do the old us, but like shake trees, lots of those.
Yeah, that, yeah, all those minutes were on there, yeah.
Very, very perfect. And Austin Job, that was done recently, with the murder, the bombing, it goes to all those that were involved. It appears that perhaps some of our citizens have too much time under the air, you know, like, there's a wild west thing, and with that said, renters, there are some renters that move out in the middle of the night, but they keep going back to that same home to pick up their rent. So, I'm sure you're aware of that, that was happening. So something, maybe look in your post office or whatever, just in the quiet, I have one more question.
Please state your name, ma'am.
So, my other question is, is what's the difference if it was a renter, if it was a homeowner? I mean, are the consequences different for them because they're a renter? Why, why would you worry about what's going on?
It's not so much the consequence to them, it's to make sure the landlord is saying who is in their property or isn't in their property, so I'm going to say, for example, my house. If I'm saying, these pe, these two people are supposed to live there, but this person's actually living there also, therefore that violates our ordinance, so they're.
You know about it, right, correct?
Well, I mean, it's.
If the landlord is aware of it, correct?
It's their, I mean, I'm not, I agree, but like I said, that's why those questions are being asked, to make sure our ordinances are being followed, that, I mean, that's what the people.
I'm trying to say, we're right into people who said, I only have one kid, and there's nine kids living in the house.
I mean, I think, I mean, I think the kids are different than adults, but like I said, I mean, when you.
Well, you can tell, honey, you have met with, when you're a landlord, and they're, they're, they're.
When you're driving a car, if you're driving a car and somebody's in the backseat, you jump out the window, you're still in trouble, because you're supposed to be in charge of your car.
So you're thinking that the landlord's responsibility to make sure your.
Well, it's not so much their actions, it's making sure our ordinance is being followed, it's just like every year how you have to fill out the.
What's the form about?
Rental, the rental permit form, it says who's list, who's living in the house, like, everyone who's listed, we're making sure all, all the procedures that we have in the place are supposed to be followed, because it goes back to, if there is an incident, let's say, let's say, God forbid, there's a fire at a house.
Right.
And there's, you know, like, hey, you're not here, we're supposed to call you, we can't get a hold of you, those are the reasons why, it's for the safety of, not only the people in the house, but also our people who are going in the house, when, like I said, it's in the, it's in the system, when our officers may have to go into a house, when our code officers.
But they say you have, like, fifteen rentals in Denver, right? And you've always followed that, that rule with the driver's licenses and check, be the background check, is the landlord going to be responsible or somewhat accused of not following the rules if that's the one landlord that he doesn't go and check to see how many people?
I mean, I don't know, you talk to Councilman Barnhart on that one, like I said, maybe something we're not going to figure out tonight, if one of those things, you have to renew the ordinance.
I believe unless you're a habitual offender, you'll get a notice if we find something, if we were to check and say, well, someone's here, and you don't have them there, we will know.
So if you're a landlord that isn't following the rules, basically.
Could you please get them, and if you're turnover rate, it's like, somebody's in there and they move out in a year, and then somebody else comes in, if somebody's.
That happens a lot.
That's how we also, the taxors too, that's how we get a pre-capital occupation tax.
What's happening?
When they give us their names, they want the taxor to pay the share.
I just know, because we do do that, the license, but sometimes they speak by it, and you, and you don't know.
And I'd say ninety percent, ninety percent of the, of the local owners, speaking, it's usually the absentee office where we have this last.
Yes, okay, thank you.
And any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? All right, next meeting.